Welcome to the City of Lowes zoning board of appeals for January 22nd. Just a few reminders, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you can turn it off or put it on vibrate so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, it would be appreciated. Also, if you have any, please do not have any side conversations in the room. If you need to speak, please step outside so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Also, just let people know, you can join the meeting remotely via Zoom and telephone as well, as well as in person. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Under continue business, when you hear your name called, please step to the lectern. State your name and address for the record and just present your project. Under continued business, we have ZBA-2023-36 petition of variance, the applicant is Kenneth Lanier, property located at 81 School Street. The applicant is applied to the Lowes zoning board of appeals, seeking a variance approval to construct a four-unit townhouse-style structure on the property, which currently has a single-family home. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the lot area for dwelling unit frontage and usable open space requirements and for any other relief required under Lowes ordinance. State representative here for 81 School Street. Seeing none, we did get communication, they are requesting a withdrawal of our prejudice. Any comments by my colleagues before we move forward with the motion?
Just double-check Dylan, anybody online? Just make sure that Mr. Lanier is not online or anybody.
He's not, he is not online.
Okay, no way? Okay.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Through Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2023-36 for variances at 81 School Street to be withdrawn without prejudice.
A second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Hubby.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. On the new business, we have ZBA-2023-42 petition of variance, the applicant is Jose and Mary Silva, property located at 6884 Kinsman Street. The applicant has applied to the Lowes zoning board of appeals, seeking a variance approval to subdivide and reconfigure the existing parcel at 6874, 7680, 84 Kinsman Street in order to construct a new duplex and create an expanded pavement area for parking. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The duplex requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1 for relief from minimum side yard setback requirements, per section 5.1 for the minimum landscape open space requirements, and for any other relief required under the Lowes ordinance. The expanded pavement requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the usable open space for dwelling unit requirements, per section 6.1 for parking space setback requirements, and any other relief required under the Lowes ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer from my Supreme Corporation, located at 142 Littleton Road in Westford. I'm here with Leo Silva, one of the owners and the applicant of the property. So just some background, Mr. Silva's family owns all of the parcels that are shown in our plan, as well as the parcel across the street, 71 and 73 Kinsman Street, and they own these four parcels that we're going to be talking here as well. So right now, these are broken up into four different parcels under common ownership of that family. There's a single-family house on one of the parcels, there's some kind of really thin, narrow parcels, one of which has an existing carport on it. Another parcel has 10 parking spaces, kind of stacked parking, right up against the street. And then the last parcel over here is an existing three-family building. And what we're proposing to do is basically reconfigure those parcels and create a new lot and a new duplex out of some of those vacant parcels in the middle. So our goal is to basically end up with three lots that conform to the zoning for the area and the frontage. Single-family house that's there, that would be its own lot. The new lot, which would have the duplex that we're going to be talking about, and then the three-family lot would stay the way that it is now. So you can see here, this is the single-family house on the right, the proposed duplex that we're doing in the middle, parking over to the left, and then the three-family. So what we're trying to do with this parking area that we're putting in is take the people that are coming from the building across the street that they also own, 71 and 73, that two-family, this existing three-family, and create a new parking area for them. Basically, take the existing stacked parking that's there and turn it into, you know, a more navigable, manageable parking lot. And then the duplex that we want to put in, we would be putting garage space in each of those two units, and then a space kind of turned out and an access driveway for each one of those units. So what we're really trying to do is just, you know, create a new lot and a new building and improve the parking situation that's there now. Right now, that stacked parking is on a different parcel than that three-family and the two-family. And there's no kind of protective easement over that, so we're trying to rectify that and put an easement over this new parking so that it's all, you know, on paper and permission is granted to do that. We do need a couple variances in order to make this work, one of which is the three-family that's there, the parking that we're going to be putting on. That kind of takes up some of the grass space in the back, so we're looking for a variance for the usable open space on that property. Right now, I actually don't believe it meets the current requirement as-is. I think there's about 750 square feet of open space there. When we put the parking area on, there won't be any. But we do have grass space over there, it just doesn't meet the five feet from a parking lot, 15-foot wide, you know, requirements that are in the bylaw, though there will still be grassed area. The second one that we need is pavement setback, so where we're coming in with this new kind of parking area, we couldn't get it to get the three feet off the new building and the existing building, so we're just asking for the foot-and-a-half distance to that three-family building, as well as where the garage spaces come into the building. There's kind of like a bump in where the garage is, so the pavement would be right up against that building on the first floor. The other variance that we're looking for is the total curb cut on that property, so right now, there's kind of an extra-wide curb cut for that stacked parking. I believe it's more than what would already be allowed by the underlying zoning. We're looking for a variance just for the total curb cut for this, you know, 20-foot access and the two 10-feet accesses for the new duplex as well. Let me see, I think there's a fourth one. Then the fourth variance and the last one that we're looking for is you have a landscaped open space requirement, so from the front face of the building to the street, it's supposed to be 50% basically lawn or landscaped area. We want to put these kind of turnout parking spaces in there, just so, you know, if somebody wants to get out of the garage, they don't have to get the other person to get out of the way. So that's why we're asking for the variance for the landscaped area. I do believe we have about 29%, if you were to do the math, so 29% of that front facade to the street is still green space. So that's kind of a summary of the project and the variances. I know it's a little complicated, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir, for the summary of your project. Now we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone want to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions and comments for the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this, first of all, there was some updated comments from the engineer's office. I want to make sure you saw that because they mentioned about the saw cutting.
Yep, they want to see basically on the plan where the utilities are, where the new services are going to be, and how the street's going to be cut up and patched, and we're more than happy to provide that information.
Perfect, thank you. On the floor plan, this is just for my edification, on the floor plan, I looked at the front elevation, rear elevation. I see that there are some sketchings at the bottom. Is there a basement?
No, this will be a slab.
Oh, it's a slab? Oh, thank you for clarifying, because I wasn't sure.
Actually, let me hang on a second. I thought it was a slab. Okay, apparently it is a full basement.
It is a full basement? Okay. Okay, is, so it's a full bas-, is it going to be used? Because I was trying to make sure I understood the floor plan where I saw. I didn't see what the basement, like, is it going to be rental or anything like that? Or?
I guess, I suppose there is a basement, yes.
Okay.
What was your question regarding the basement, or were you just trying to figure out if it was?
Well, I was just trying to determine if, you know, just from the drawings, if there was, if it's a full basement or if it is a basement, because I, I don't think I saw on the floor plan that it said it was going to be a basement and what's its use.
So I think maybe more accurately, it's a partial basement, so you are going to have a drive-in garage here that's going to kind of step up to the lower level.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is, it's a very nice plan, and I could see the need for the parking because, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be very concise in there, so it's worth it. And there's no room that you can consider any landscaping, right? Because it's just right up to the...
Yeah, I mean, we can plant things if that's what you were looking for, but, you know, there's no reason not to have landscaping.
Okay, I appreciate that, because, you know, I mean, it's such a beautiful area and it's so wide open now. You know, I thought that it would be nice to have, I mean, not just the cars, but, so maybe we can make that into a condition, I mean, to put something in there. And nothing is going to be done with 84 and 68 Kinsman, right?
I believe that's the existing house. Yeah, the existing house and the three-family will stay as-is, yep.
Okay. Let's see what else I had. Okay. Okay, well, you've answered some of the questions, I already jotted down, so I'll leave it to the rest of the board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if they have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the petition narrative that the variance criteria submitted for approval has been met, and as a result, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple questions, but I think that this has a lot of merit. I definitely think that the off-street parking area is a big improvement, for sure, in that area, so that alone is wonderful to see. So the landscaping, are you open to shade trees? There's no shade trees shown here, and I would say that maybe a minimum of four shade trees.
We don't have any opposition to that.
I'd like to see a minimum of four shade trees planted along here since it's such a nice feature to provide, especially with all the parking that you're providing there.
Yep, happy to do that.
And then I think as a second condition that we adopt the engineering comments, in particular, the comment about the, I think it's a comment, well, he's outnumbered. The comment about the saw cutting of the roadway to reset the curb with a six-inch reveal, an additional granite curb will be needed to infill that opening, so if we could adopt that as a condition.
Sure, that's fine.
How are you handling drainage?
So this is actually pretty close, I'm not going to call it net zero, but it's not a big increase because we're taking out that kind of oversized parking that's there and a couple of the buildings that are already there, like the sheds, and I think there was like an outbuilding, a carport, et cetera. So it's not a huge increase as far as the square footage of impervious goes, but otherwise, the pavement would just drain to the street system.
Okay. I kind of figured as much, but I just wanted to ask the question if we're getting any infiltration out of this or not, but you're comparing it to what's currently there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a large increase.
Okay. Okay, can I just understand, the variances are a little odd here, so I just want to make sure I understand them correctly. So Lot 1, there are no variances required.
Correct.
Lot 2, we're saying there's a variance required for usable open space, landscaped open space. Is that right? There's a variance required for usable open space?
Usable open space would actually be the third lot.
Okay, so Lot 2 is no, okay, so Lot 2 is not the usable, it's just the landscaped open space requirement, and then a condition for the, I'm sorry, variance for the curb cut.
And I believe distance from pavement to the building as well, where it comes into the garage.
So is that the three variances then on Lot 2?
Yep, three on Lot 2, and then one on Lot 3.
And then an additional variance on Lot 3?
Yeah.
Is that Lot 3? Yeah.
So there should be a total of four.
Great, okay. Now I understand.
Staff and I went back and forth a little bit on the exact variances, so I wanted to make sure I knew the four that we decided on.
I just want to ask that on Lot 3, that we maintain that space that's not paved and not building as green space versus turn that into, you know, patio or something? Is that agreeable? To help with drainage back there?
We're fine with that.
Okay. All right, that's all I had then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's great, great, set up a great project. You're being very restrained on the, especially the new duplex you're putting in. Only one thing I was, got a question about, maybe a minor concern, is the bump outs on Lot 2. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do there as far as putting a spot, putting spots on each side to help the one going into the garage come out, but, I mean, I just kind of see it as a possibility that it may kind of be for naught and maybe treated as a third parking spot at some point. I mean, what are the dimensions of those, the bump outs there? Because I don't really see them.
The bump outs are intended to be a full space, so I believe they're 18 feet wide and eight feet long.
Okay.
I believe that's the space requirement in that zone.
Okay. Because, I mean, if we kind of cut those down, you're adding on a little bit more green space there, but I guess they're catch-22 in that instance, and there's not really much you can do to try to stop somebody from making it three parking spots as opposed to two, so, and Kinsman Street.
The only other way I could think to do it would be to put it somewhere in the lease or in the rules for the tenants that are there. You know what I mean? Something specifically stating that they can't park in that garage.
So these, are these going to be condos or are these going to be rentals?
You're intending to rent them or have people buy them? Yeah, they're going to be rented.
Okay. I mean, I'll trust that Mr. and Mrs. Silva are going to do the right thing about that and leave it to anything. I don't think we should be can condition that. Otherwise, they're just going to have some angry tenants, probably, or something to that effect.
Yeah, I think we'll just try to manage it, you know?
Yep, okay. But yeah, I think it's a great, I think it's a great project. I mean, Kinsman Street parking is restrictive over there, obviously, because very tight, very tight streets in that neighborhood, so that was the one main concern I had, but I'm sure it's going to all work out, and I wish you the best of luck, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hubby. Mr. Hubby, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Overall, I think it's a good project. I see the need. From right to left, obviously Lot 1 doesn't need any variances, so that really doesn't have anything to do with us. Lot 2, you have landscaped open space in the front. I get why you're doing what you're doing, and, you know, off-street parking is a major need there, so I can stomach that. Lot 3 is kind of where I have that issue, is there's 10 stacked parking spots now, and we're going from usable open space that's there now, and we're losing, obviously, Lot 2, all that usable open space that's open right now, to none. I mean, we're going from some to none. I just don't, I have a hard time seeing the hardship there to change the parking from stacked.
Well, I can respond to the hardship specifically. This lot right now, I believe, is about 3,000 square feet. If you were to make a three-family lot now, you know what I mean? If you were to create a new property, I think it's 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit, your minimum lot size would be 12,000 square feet. So you have something that's very undersized for what would be allowed by zoning now, and that's why it doesn't meet the requirement now, is because it probably wouldn't be able to regardless, just with the building there and the lot size.
No, no, I understand that, but without combining and moving lots around, there would be no hardship. So you're making your own hardship in this case. So that's where I have an issue, and it's not just you folks. It's, you know, making something that's non-conforming and then saying it's a hardship. I've listened to the other members, obviously, the majority of them disagree with this. I just don't see a hardship to change from the existing condition to eating up all the open space, especially when currently Lot 2, before the combination of all the different lots, is open space. So we're going from a dense area with open space to eating up all the open space. That's just my opinion. Again, I think the project's well thought out, and I understand why you're doing it, but, you know, those 10 parking spots aren't just for Lot 3, those are for the...
Across the street.
Across the street, right? So in my opinion, it doesn't meet the hardship part, so I won't vote for this, but I appreciate what you folks are doing, and I'll listen to the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubby. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I think that the plans, the floor plans are self-explanatory, so I don't really have any questions. Everything usually concerns parking, and you're offering parking, off-street parking, so I don't really see the negative side to this, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Sir, I always think it's a good thing where we can provide additional housing for residents. You know, I think the application you're presenting before is, it is, it has merit. And you're open to all the things we talked about in terms of the landscape and the green space and additional shade trees and all that, and, okay, and the other conditions, adopt the engineering comments, and then on Lot 3, no build on that for drainage. All right, if there's no further comments, we'll move forward with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just get a little clarification? The applicant mentioned that the two new developments is rental, he has no intention on selling. This, for my edification, should we have a floor plan of the basement to see what it will be used for? I don't know if that's a requirement, unless I'm mistaken, I don't see it here, so that's why I'm asking.
We could provide one, we'd be happy to provide one.
You want to make that a condition, Mr. Proko? Updated floor plans for the basement?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To that extent, is, Mr. Proko, is your concern that the basement's be, remain unfinished? Is that maybe, is that something we should consider a condition on? If that's what the concern is?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
I think I've run afoul of that condition in the past with Francesca, and I don't think we can make conditions on how spaces are used.
Yeah, you're right. Correct.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, just trying to clarify.
Can you repeat that, Mr. McCarthy?
So the building plans are going to be reviewed by the building inspector for appropriateness, and I don't think we, as a board, can condition how the building, you know, I think we have to stay strict to zoning.
If there's no further comments, we'll move forward with a, with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just get a little clarification? The applicant mentioned that the, the two new developments is rental, he has no intention on selling. Um, this, for my identification, should we have a floor plan of the basement to see what it will be used for? I don't know if that's a requirement. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't see it here, so that's why I'm asking.
We could provide one. Be happy to provide one.
You want to make that a condition, Mr. Proko? Updated floor plans for the basement?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To that extent, is, number Proko, is your concern that the basements be, remain unfinished? Is that, maybe is that something we should consider a condition on? If that's what the concern is?
Yes.
Number McCarthy?
I think I've run afoul of that condition in the past with Francesca, and I don't think we can make conditions on how spaces are used.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Correct.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, just trying to clarify.
Can you repeat that, Mr.? I could hear you.
So, the building plans are gonna be reviewed by the building inspector for, for appropriateness, and I don't think we, as a board, can condition how the building, you know, I, I think we have to stay strict to zoning.
Yeah.
Is what she's telling us, as of what I understand.
Correct.
We can't get into the building code piece.
Okay, that's fine. I was more actually wondering, like, if, if it's a full basement, if it's gonna be developed as potentially rental, is where I was going.
It's just one means of egress on the plan, so that's all we have to go by.
Okay, that's, then I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Any other comments by the board?
I will say, as far as the egress goes...
Go ahead.
We do show a bulkhead in the back, so even though we don't have a basement plan, it seems the intention is to have a second means of egress out of there.
Well, the only, the other egress, if I could say...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McCarthy.
Is through the other unit, which wouldn't satisfy an egress from a separate unit.
Yep.
So that's why I'm saying there's only one means of egress.
Understood, yep.
Just, just so you're aware, an additional unit would not be allowed under zoning? Let me clarify this, but...
Right.
An additional unit in this zone would require additional variances, so if they wanted to add a unit, they would have to come back before this board.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker.
The, the petition is, hey, can we just ask him what he plans to do with the basement?
Yes, we can.
So he said they had no plans to rent it. It's gonna be for storage.
Okay. Thank you.
And that may be why we didn't supply the plans.
Can he come to the mic so I can hear him, please?
Just want to repeat that.
Yeah, I said, I have no plans to finish the basement. The garage takes quite a bit of space anyhow. I just want a little bit of storage for the tenants, just because there's no attic storage.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Silva. Any other comments by the board? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-42 for variances at 68 to 84, Kinsman Street. Variance to subdivide and reconfigure the existing parcels 68, 74, 76, 80, 84, Kinsman Street. The variance is for Lot 2 for curb-cut variance, landscape, open space variance, and parking variance, setback variance, and for Lot 3 for usable open space, with the following four conditions. Number one, to maintain the open space at Lot 3 that is currently that has green space. Lot, and condition number two, to provide no less than four street trees along Kinsman Street. Number three, to adopt the requirements of the engineering department to socket the roadway with a reglet, I'm, to, to reset the curb with a six-inch reveal for wheelchair ramp. And number four, to provide floor plan of the basement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Deny.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda under new business.
Just leave it on lectern.
Got it.
Thank you, sir. We have ZBA-2023-51. A petition is a special permit. The applicant is Vascular Management and Innovations Group, LLC, property located 1115 Westford Street. The applicant has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, seeking special permit approval to open a vascular care center in the office building located at 1115 Westford Street. The subject property is located in the Office Park OP Zoning District. The proposal requires special permit approval per section Article 12HC to operate a medical center in the OP Zoning District, and for any other relief required in the Lowell Zoning ordinance. As an applicant here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You want to just tell us about your project?
I apologize?
You want to just tell us about your project?
Sure. So, our group, we're happy to represent a group called the Vascular Care Group. We are looking forward to having the opportunity to bring vascular services to the city of Lowell. We employ now 22 vascular surgeons, and we have grown to become the largest vascular group in the country. Our intent is to increase access to care for this type of care or vascular services in communities that haven't historically had access to this type of care. Vascular surgeons are among the most sought-after and most desirable types of surgeons for healthcare systems to have access to, and we would be bringing two to three of those vascular surgeons here to Lowell, and increasing access and capacity for that type of care for the residents of this area.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir. We're open over here into the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, the portion of procreation is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, seeing none, the procreation is closed. We're gonna over-question the comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reading from the DPD's comment memorandum clearly indicates that, that this proposal brings outpatient vascular care to Lowell, a service that we currently do not have.
That's correct.
So, clearly the indication that this is a significant need that exists in our community. I look forward to your community partnership, and we'll be supporting the petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask, where is the closest vascular care facility now to Lowell or serving? Would it be serving mainly the Lowell General campus? Yeah?
Yes, we'll be working directly with Lowell General Hospital, and the hospital has actually sent over this evening a letter stating that they would support our move to this community and look forward to our partnership. Today, vascular surgeons are covering this community by coming up from Boston through the affiliation that Lowell General Hospital has with Tufts Medical, and so they rotate surgeons when available to this community from Boston. And then, care and patients are usually sent back down for procedures or intervention to the Boston area. We're looking forward to being able to keep that right here at Lowell General Hospital.
That's great. One of the comments that they did have, by the way, this sounds phenomenal, and I'm so glad that you found a location here and it's right on a reasonable traffic flow, especially once that new bridge is put in, which is coming soon. In any event, one of the comments was to ask about the medical waste.
Yes, we have relationships with professional removal services, so any medical waste that we would have, we hang containers in every box in every one of our office spaces, and that is professionally moved by, removed by usually like a service care or one of the professional organizations that we would be employing and contracting with for appropriate removal of that waste.
So they come in and remove it from the locations within the facility and don't store it in any kind of, any container outside?
So there's like, when you go to a doctor's office, you have a sharps container or whatever it may be, we would put it in there, they come in in a special color-coded bag, and then they remove that and bring that to their facility.
Makes sense. Great. I, I think this makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad you're doing it here, and it seems like it is a very appropriate spot for it, for sure, so I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three Mr. Chairman. I'll make reference to the, to the comments from DPD staff, assistant planner Katrumbis with regards to the application, the master plan, and he says that the proposal will serve objectives 6 and 10 of a healthy and sustainable local economy. He then goes out and talks about objective 6, attract new businesses to the city by targeting growing industry sectors that align well with the greater Lowell region's resources, workforce, and competitive advantage, indicates the applicant, indicates that the vascular center would bring approximately 20 new jobs to the region, which is great, and then objective 10, which is very important, support the health services industry to maintain a high-quality, accessible healthcare to Lowell residents. The proposal would bring outpatient vascular care to Lowell, which is a service we don't have, and, and as you stated, that the narrative mentions your collaboration with Lowell General. So, this clearly is, meets all the criteria of the special permit. It is great to have a growing business in the city of Lowell, especially in the health professions, especially something with regards to vascular area, and I would be in full support of this, so I wish you the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. You said there's gonna be two or three vascular surgeons working, I'm guessing, rounds there, and this really has nothing to do with approval or denial, but do you know how, and but Callahan just read a certain number, but do you estimate how many staff besides those two or three surgeons are gonna be on site?
I could run through it in my head. I've done enough of these performos for the...
Sure you have.
...to happen. I would, I would guess you'd have an entire staff of maybe 10, 10 to 12.
All right. Well, that's all, I mean, you're not expanding a footprint, you, you're bringing a service. I have no problems with this, I was just asking for my own information. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm in support of this as well. Everything that Mr. Callahan said, you know, reading off the DPW stuff makes a lot of sense, and service is definitely needed, so I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I echo the sentiments of the rest of the board. It's, this definitely adds to these services, the diversity of services that's being offered in this city, and I, I think it'll be a great addition to this economy. As member McCarthy said, as soon as that bridge is finished, it'll be a lot better, so I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Yeah, just like my colleague said, sir, this is something that's really needed in the community here. It doesn't exist already, so thank you for bringing this health, health need to our city. It's appreciated. Any other comments by my colleagues?
Yeah, one quick one. If you could encourage your staff to go north in Eaton Lowell, not south in Eaton Drumhill, we'd appreciate that.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Any other comments?
They got a condition?
Any other comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-51 for a special permit at 1115 Westford Street to operate a medical center at, in the OP zoning district.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming out tonight. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda. We have other business. Minutes for approval for January 8th, 2023, excuse me, strike that, 2024. We just update that, that'd be great. Any comments, edits, additions to, to the minutes for January 8th, 2024? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 8th, 2024.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Any other comments from my colleagues for adjourn? All right, seeing none, can we motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Havi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.